So, welcome. This is a hearing of the Education and Youth Committee of the Baltimore City Council. I'm Councilman Zeke Cohen, Chairman of the Committee. Tonight, we will hear Bill 20-0519, the Children and Youth Fund Establishment of Permanent Fiscal Agent. I introduce this bill at the request of Mayor Young. In attendance tonight is the members of the Education and Youth Committee. To probably my left, but who knows, is my Vice Chair, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Councilman John Bullock, Councilman Christopher Burnett, and Councilman Leon Pinkett. Joining us tonight from the Mayor and President's staff, Lester Davis, Mr. Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office as well, Kylan Young, who you've already heard from, from the Council President's staff, Jennifer Coates, who is staff to the Committee, and thank you to Jennifer for getting us set up as well. My staff, Joshua Thompson, is in attendance. We have Agency staff here tonight, Elena DePietro from the Law Department, Mara James from Finance, Bob Senemi also from Finance. So, tonight, again, we'll be hearing the Children and Youth Fund. The Baltimore Children and Youth Fund represents a long overdue commitment to our children. More than that, it's a commitment to supporting our children through a lens of equity and through participatory, community-based grant funding. Baltimore is haunted by a toxic legacy of racist policies like redlining, blockbusting, subprime lending, so many more. This bill is a genuine attempt to rectify some of that history and give Baltimoreans a voice in the process. There have been significant hurdles and bumps along the way, but I'm proud of the work that so many grantees and so many people have done to improve the lives of our children. I want to thank Mayor Young for carrying this important legislation, and particularly his staff, Lester Davis. Thank you to President Scott and my colleagues for their commitment. Also want to thank the Associated Black Charities for their role in holding and distributing funds. Thank you, John Brothers, Adam Jackson, Devon Love, and the Youth Fund Board for all that you've done. Thank you to the many grantees who are fighting every day for our children. And, most importantly, thank you to the thousands of Baltimore's community members who have participated throughout this process. This is something we should truly be proud of as we are opening the doors of philanthropy to folks throughout our city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davis from the Mayor's Office and Mr. Devon Love to walk us through this ordinance.
So, can everyone hear me? Okay. One first, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Committee. Want to also thank President Scott and members of his staff. I know we worked very hard over the course of recently, but also for a number of years dating back to at least 2015 for Mayor Pat, who was on the council then, and then 2016 for the members who came on board then and then worked on the original ordinance. So, thank you to all of you guys for your own waiver and support. On behalf of the Mayor, we want to thank the Councilman Cohen for introducing the legislation. And really at a place where we're looking at, you know, some groundbreaking legislation. It's a piece of legislation that puts community at the forefront. The decision-making takes that out of government's hands and puts it in the hands of people in community, which I think this council has stood up for and has been kind of a champion for the need to make sure that the decision-making is in the community. So, the bill that you have before you, it tracks very closely with that and is very similar to the work that we all engaged in with the task force back in 2016 when we convened dozens and dozens of folks throughout the city to try to think through what a youth fund process should look like. And so, I just want to highlight that and bring that up and thank everyone for their hard work. I think, beginning in 2015, shortly after the unrest, and continuing to today, the members of this council and then the external partners who have been champion and pushing this youth fund forward and keeping, I think, everyone on track have all had a consistent commitment to determining how these dollars would be spent. This is a fact that I think you all should be proud of. I think everyone in the city should be proud of, as the Councilman mentioned. It has, you know, it has not been without some bumps along the way. I think anyone who works on a startup or works in industries that are new or revolutionary, you know that there are going to be some kinks that you have to work out, but I think that folks have stayed true to the desire to make sure that the people's voices are at the forefront. So, this bill continues to do that. It allows, I want to speak to a couple very specific points. The bill allows for direct grant making to programming, but more importantly, it allows for those programs to be able to have capacity building, which has also always been a big part of the youth fund to make sure that as you do grant making to small, kind of mom-and-pop style nonprofits and startups, that you really invest in them on the front end so that you don't just give them an infusion of dollars and grant-making dollars and not give them the necessary support to continue to do the work until the long haul. So, the grant, the capacity building is something that is key in this and something that we wanted to make sure we lifted up and kind of brought to the forefront. So, just want to kind of point that out and thank you all for that. We've also placed a premium on racial equity and developing a racial equity framework and something this council and the President have been very big on, making sure that the city is doing equity in a real way and then not just in a tokenism sort of way. And I think the youth fund continues that work, lifting that up. So, I want to make sure I point that out. And then, I think also, the decision-making, the collective community decision-making, where you have folks who are in community who oftentimes are outside of these processes and oftentimes do not get an opportunity to weigh in in a real way and how dollars that are coming to their community are spent. And so, this is an opportunity for people to engage, and we've seen that with the first round of grant making that the fund did back in 2017, where you had individuals, again, not, you know, not perfect, nothing is perfect, but you had individuals who were able to have their voices heard in a way that is truly unique and truly revolutionary. So, I appreciate it. I'll be around for any questions, but I did want to point those pieces out.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is Mr. Young able to present as well? I'm sorry. Yeah, is Devon Love available to present?
Devon, let me elevate him, just a moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Love, you should be able to unmute yourself now and speak.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right, all right. So, yeah, my name is Devon Love. I'm coordinator of community outreach for the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. Just want to echo Lester Davis's sentiments and the Chairman's sentiments about just all the work that's been put into this effort. And Lester went over a lot of some of the introductory stuff that I wanted to mention, namely, many of the principles that were created through the task force, particularly around racial equity, community ownership, and a generational leadership, capacity building. These were specific charges that came out of the Youth Fund Task Force. And so, you know, currently underway, there are about 80 or so grantees that have been providing programs for youth, you know, since that first round of decision-making happened around programs that will be supported. And as many of you who participated in the February 20th hearing of all the diversity of programs that were funded by that first cohort, so I don't want to be redundant in talking about just a lot of the different, you know, really great programs that were funded by the first-year cohort and the continuations. There are two things that I want to talk about, though, that are relevant to the piece of legislation before this body. And that includes conversation about infrastructure and conversation about the transition, because I think those are the two things that are going to be really important as to how you look at the legislation before you. So, you know, one of the things that was mentioned is the importance of this effort in getting organizations, particularly grassroots organizations, that traditionally have been outside of the traditional philanthropic space, access to funds. And this isn't a problem merely of just lack of recognition. There's a strong deficiency in the infrastructure around grant-making locally that facilitates this dynamic. So, when we look at the current landscape, that it doesn't make available commensurate to the need, the kind of supports necessary for a program or initiative to scale up and be sustainable. So, things like access to program evaluation, building out the administrative and financial infrastructures, things like marketing, things like professional development, these are all the things that traditionally are not made available in the larger ecosystem that exists in grant-making locally. So, a part of the charge of the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund really is to build that infrastructure such that organizations have access to what they need in order to fully participate in the sector. And so, the importance of the youth fund being independent in terms of its governance is to have the autonomy necessary to lead the sector towards the development of this infrastructure that would be truly empowering to the community. So, as we think about what this bill does and the transition, this bill essentially transitions the work from the interim fiscal agent, which has been Associated Black Charity, into Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund Incorporated. Associated Black Charities, as a result of the initial ordinance that authorized the work, was response, one of its responsibilities, in addition to managing the first cohort, was to build out this new intermediary. And so, there's a transition team that is in place that has been diligently working to prepare the new entity for taking over and finishing out the management of this cohort of the continuation grants, as well as building out the operational needs for the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund Incorporated to be fully functional. Before I, you know, finish out, turn it back over to the Chairman for any questions, there are two specific things in the bill that I want to call you all's attention to that I think are just really central for making sure that people understand what this bill is doing. The first is that the bill identifies a list of folks that will serve on the transition board for 18 months. It's important to note that it's common practice with your building up startups that you have an initial board that has the expertise necessary to build out the governance that'll be the foundation for this new entity. So, by ABC being tasked with standing up the new entity, it was the team that was put together by ABC that selected the interim board or these transition board members based on having the expertise necessary to structure the governance for this entity in such a way that is in line with the mandate handed down by the Youth Fund Task Force. I want to point out that from the transition board to the permanent board, this ordinance requires that in order for that permanent board to be seated, one of the processes is that it has to go to the council before it is approved by the Board of Estimates. So, the council will have the opportunity, as per this ordinance, to vet those who are populated on the initial permanent board, creating what I think is important, the importance of having a process by which the public is informed about how that is populated. In addition, in conversation with many of the interim board members, there is a commitment to making sure that the public is included in the process for determining how those board members that constitute the initial permanent board will be selected. The second thing that I want in the bill to call your attention to, and this is actually an amendment that I understand will be submitted, or that should be already prepared, is the issue of youth representation on the board. And actually, the current bylaws of the Baltimore Children and Youth, actually speak to the importance of youth participation. And when the bylaws are finalized, there's a commitment by the interim board to both have a substantive number of youth board members serving on the board, but also making sure that there is a strong process for onboarding board members to participate. Because the thing that I think is really important to note is that we're talking about like real fiduciary responsibility. And so, we want to make sure that there's a strong process that trains young people for them to understand the responsibility they're accepting by serving as a board member with the level of fiduciary responsibility that they have so that they're properly informed and that they're set up for success. And so, that's something that is a commitment and something that we look forward to having as a part of this piece of legislation. So, I'll stop there and if you want to take any questions.
I'm now going to take a moment to see if my colleagues have questions before we go to Agency Reports. And just for the public, after Agency Reports, we are going to hear from you all, we'll hear testimony from the public. There are also, as Mr. Love mentioned, a number of amendments that have been proposed. We will then ultimately vote on the bill. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kylan Young and Ms. Coates to help me with calling on folks. With that said, colleagues, are there any questions for Mr. Davis and Mr. Love? So, one question that I have, can you describe the transition from the temporary board into the permanent structure and all of the ways in which council, city government will or will not have input, all of the ways in which community has input? Can you just talk a little bit more about what that process looks like and the timeline behind it?
You want me to take that, Lester?
Yeah, if you could, David, I do want to point out before you get into it, Chairman, I do want to lift up that one of the things that came out of the task force recommendations, and we spent from, I think, February of 2016, May of 2016, so, you know, roughly about six months or so engaged with community. And one of the things that came out and is in the task force recommendations, and we can make sure that the Committee, and it should be, it's a public document, so it should live online, is that there was really a recognition that community coming out of the unrest of the collective team really wanted to build an institution from the ground up and saw, you know, ABC as a group that had racial equity baked in as really just a kind of a bridge, if you will, to get the city to a place where you could have an entity that was started from scratch, started fresh, and that had two components, for sure, baked into its bones, racial equity, but then also community participation and engagement. And so, I do want to point out that the space that we are in today was prescribed back when we were engaged in doing the work with community, and it's in fact one of the promises that we did make to community that we would get to the place we are. So, I'll let Devon jump in, but I did just want to point that one caveat out.
Yep, and in terms of the actual process of the transition, I think there are a couple of things in response to your question, Chairman, that I think is important for the public. The first is that the ordinance tasked the transition board with developing what will be the final bylaws that'll be filed with the Board of Estimates. The reason for that is, as I mentioned before, this board is committed to making sure that there is a public process that helps to structure what is in those actual bylaws. And so, those bylaws, again, will be filed with the Board of Estimates, but again, it also requires that before that board is populated, the permanent board, that there is a council here, that it comes before the city council. And so, I think in terms of the public's participation in that transition, it'll actually be essential. And one of the things that I know was also in the ordinance or in the amendments is a requirement for the youth fund to have public hearings, where the youth fund is required to talk about the nature of its operations and its progress. So, that is in the ordinance, and again, that is a requirement placed on the youth fund via this ordinance that it has a public hearing so that people have an opportunity to weigh in.
Ladies, are there any other questions? So, my final question then, for Mr. Davis and maybe Mr. Love, if you want to weigh in after. So, as we both stated previously, there have been some challenges along the way with the youth fund. Can you discuss the response to the audit that was done? And can you discuss the auditing process moving forward as this bill will be voted on tonight?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, yeah, I think the youth fund had its first audit, which, you know, audits, the way we view audits, they're necessary, right? I mean, there's a reason that Baltimore City, I think, engages in more audits than probably any other jurisdiction in the state, and I think the city is better for it because of that. A lot of that is because of the work that you guys have pushed forward and engaged in. And so, with the audit, and the audit is a public document, it's online, so folks can see it. There were no material defects, no, you know, allegations of anything improper. I think that when you do an audit, folks should look at it as an opportunity to figure out where folks need to improve. And there's never, at least I'm not aware of, any, you know, nonprofit or government entity or anybody or jurisdiction that has done an audit and didn't have some recommendation from the auditors of how maybe some processes or things can improve. I think when you do an audit, you actually want to find out what you can maybe tighten up and what are some of the areas where you can improve upon. I think that the auditing function is still in this audit, is still in this ordinance. So, the youth fund is subject to regular routine audits by the city that are public. It's also subject to mandated oversight by council committee that is obviously determined at the discretion of the President. And there's representation on the board from the President and then also from the administration and the Law Department and the Finance Department. So, I think in terms of oversight, you know, while we want to be revolutionary and groundbreaking and we want to make sure that we can adhere to, I think, some principles that are going to set Baltimore head and shoulders above other jurisdictions as it relates to the way that you do grant-making that puts community first, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers of the city. And so, you know, in terms of the auditing function, that will remain strong. The, you know, the city can audit at random, and then there's a schedule of audits as well for the fund. And then also, you know, the council has an oversight capability and function where it's mandated for at least one hearing a year, but of course, any member of the council, as well as the President, is free to call in, members of the youth fund, the board, to kind of give an update or explain what's going on in the community.
Mr. Love, anything you'd like to add?
I think that's good.
All right, great. One last chance, Committee members, questions? All right. So, we are now going to move to Agency Reports. In case questions do come up, please, Mr. Davis and Mr. Love, please hang around. We're now going to hear reports, beginning with Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Bob Senemi, reporting from the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. This bill simply establishes a permanent fiscal agent, and so, there's no direct financial impact to this particular legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Senemi. Is Elena DePietro available to share any update from the Law Department?
I'm on, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, I've been working with this a long time as well, so I know a lot about what's going on with this fund. So, when I was looking at this, I was concentrating on the original charter provision and how this bill jived with that. And there were just a few things I wanted to bring up that I thought I could use some tightening. The first thing that I saw was that under the charter provision, it says that by ordinance, the Mayor and City Council shall provide for oversight, governance, and administration of the Children's and Youth Fund, including methods and criteria for identifying programs and methods and criteria for allocating the funds. And then, so, when I looked in the bill, I did not see much about methods and criteria for allocating available funds among the programs that they determine are eligible. So, I did suggest in my report, which I apologize for some reason, I thought I sent it yesterday and it didn't show up, but I did suggest some language, and it is available now online, and now my computer doesn't want to scroll. But, basically, I took a portion of the charter provision that you can find in Section 13 of Article 1 and inserted that as a basic criteria for allocating funds, so that way we're complying with the mandate of the charter. So, I wish I could get this to move. My next concern had to do with just the board and how it was composed. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There was a reference to a member on the board from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. It was a suggestion, actually, one of my colleagues made, that that office has changed names over the years, and we suggested it perhaps in order to facilitate that person's membership on the board in future administrations that we reference, the office within the Mayor's Office that is responsible for monitoring programming for children and youth, or something along those lines. Then the next thing that I wanted to mention, this is the last thing. So, the very last part of the bill is, there's a Section 3 that mandates that the interim fiscal agent be compensated for work done post-termination of the interim fiscal agent's responsibilities. And we really thought that the interim fiscal agent is actually governed by a pretty substantial MOU, and it would be odd not to have another MOU to govern any post-work, post-determination work that the interim fiscal agent is performing, rather than trying to stick it in here into the ordinance, which it really is not the appropriate place for a contractual arrangement. So, we suggested that that part be put into a separate MOU with the interim fiscal agent for, you know, for consistency and really what is the right thing to do. It's just not appropriate legislative material. And that is, those are the major points. I did point out, too, that the MOU, actually, there was some discussion about the transfer of the responsibilities of the fiscal agent with respect to audits. We pointed out that in the MOU, actually, the city is the one responsible for auditing the fiscal agent and the participants, the grantees, so that's not really an issue. If the city has a responsibility for it now, so there's nothing to transfer. And that concludes the Law Department's concerns and suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Pietro. Colleagues, any questions for either Finance or Law? Hearing none. All right. Before turning to public testimony, I will say again that the youth fund represents a real opportunity and has represented an opportunity to change the way we do grant-making in Baltimore for the better and really center community. I will also say that in this coronavirus moment that we're in, where we are all clearly adjusting and having to proceed very differently, that there is certainly a role for the youth fund to play in providing some emergency support to some of the priorities facing children and families in this moment. And so... And so we know that in conversations with the President's Office and the Mayor's Office, that we are all looking at what the Youth Fund can do right now to help children and families as we go through this extremely difficult time together. That all being said, Mr. Kalen, would you mind helping to bring in public testimony for me?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So everybody, if you don't mind, really quickly, I'm going to just show you all that slide once again. Once again, down in the bottom right corner, you'll see where it's circled and red, where you can click on the hand raised function. And by clicking on that function, you will identify for me and the chair that you would like to testify. Leave this up just for another moment, just to give everybody an opportunity to locate it. All right. Mr. Chair, we'll start with Nika Namdi, with your blessing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you all hear me? Can you hear me? Great. Good afternoon. My name is Nika Namdi. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Living Wealth Center for Social and Economic Vibrancy, as well as the creator of Fight Blight Be More. And we were a Tier One, I believe it was, Youth Fund awardee. And we are here really just to support the Youth Fund going forward to an independent fiscal agent. Just a few things to note. I think it is really important to say it at every stage, that it is important that the community's voice is upheld in terms of the creation of or the selection of the permanent board, but also that the community gets some training. Davon mentioned that it is important that the youth members of the board get training about their fiduciary responsibility as sitting members controlling the Youth Fund. But I also think it's important to open that training up to community members so that they can understand the total fiduciary responsibility of the board members and of the fund itself and of grantees, so that everyone is working from the same information when they are attempting to express and give voice to their concerns or whatever have you. So that's one point I wanted to make. And the second point I wanted to make is it's important that going forward, that the financial records or what it comes out of, financial reporting or even the audit reports, are easily understandable by community so that folks have the ability to be a part of the accountability process and do so with, you know, from an informed viewpoint. And then the third point I will make is that is somewhat related to Councilperson Cohen's last statement about COVID-19 and supporting grantees and the youth through this time. I think it is important to try to take a look at how, I don't know what the plan, and I haven't heard, for Youth Works for this summer, but figuring out maybe through the Youth Fund or some other method, how to enable virtual jobs for young people throughout the summer. And that's something that we'd be willing to partner and discuss further. Thank you.
First, thank you for your testimony. Second, thanks for your really good work in fighting blight in our city. And third, thanks for lifting up the importance of Youth Works. I know that it's a conversation that we've started having. What does it look like if young people are not able to go to physical sites? What could Youth Works, whether it's telework, what could that look like? So again, appreciate you lifting that up as well. I think it's a really important conversation for us to have right now as we head toward a summer that I think is going to look very, very different for Baltimore.
Thank you.
Next person, Mr. Chair, is Emily Sherman.
Hi, council members, this is Emily Sherman. I'm the Director of Soccer Without Borders and formerly of Councilman Craft's office. It's been a while since I joined a committee hearing, so happy to be back. We were fortunate members to receive the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund in the first year and then just signed our contract for the second year. And so my question is really around timing. The contract that we just signed said that this transition would happen on July 1st. So I'm wondering if that is still the anticipated timeline, given the current situation? And if not, what would kind of happen if the timeline is pushed back? And then additionally, looking farther into the future, do you anticipate that there would be a lag between year two and year three that there was between year one and year two? There was about six months without funding between year one and year two, which was challenging. So I'm just wondering if we should anticipate that again in between year two and year three? Thank you.
First off, thanks for your good work with Soccer Without Borders. Mr. Love, do you want to respond to the questions that were asked?
There should be a couple of folks on the line that are on hand to answer some of those questions. I know that Associated Black Charities should be on the call. And I also believe that Kira Ritter, who is the project manager for the transition, should be on the call. So if they're on the call, they actually will be the appropriate people to address the specifics of those questions.
Davon, if you wouldn't mind, if you could, I've lifted up Ms. Diane Bell McCoy, and what was the second name one more time?
Ritter.
Can you repeat it again?
Kira, K-E-R-A, and then Ritter, R-I-T-T-E-R.
All right, got it. Thank you. Both of them have now been made panelists and should be able to unmute themselves and speak.
Good evening, and thank you very much. This is Diane Bell McCoy, and thank you very much, Councilman Cohen, for this opportunity. The answer to the question as I know it today, obviously COVID-19 changes things for all of us every day. We are working to be on track to do the transition to the new entity by the due date. Obviously, the legislation moving forward is a big step and a big part of that process. As Davon Love indicated, Ms. Ritter, we have an agreement with the Fund for Educational Excellence, that agreement's between ABC and the Fund as a result of leadership from the mayor's office and the Finance Department to provide grant funding to help move those steps forward so that the new entity could in fact be positioned to start as of July 1st. So we are moving forward with that in mind. The city has given us the framework that if in fact the contract date needs to change, because per the MOU we're operating under, we are still working with grantees, as the speaker just indicated, just sign the contract, meaning the grantees are delivering services virtually, we will be able to, working with the new entity, to alter that contract dates if it's necessary. But the way it's laid out now, the new entity picks up those contracts as of July 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Bell McCoy. Appreciate you tuning in. All right. Mr. Kalen, could you bring us to our next person?
Yes, sir. The next person is Ms. Eva Wingren. Eva? You just muted yourself. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Great, thanks everyone. My name is Eva Wingren. I'm the Acting Director of Development at Strong City Baltimore. We fiscally sponsor over 100 organizations, including nine who got Baltimore Children and Youth Fund funding in the first round. And so we managed about $1 million of the first round of funding. And I'd like to first front load kind of my recommendations from the perspective of somebody who managed, I didn't directly, but my organization managed money under the fund. And then also, if I have time, read a little bit into the public record of a letter that we made available to our foundation partners about kind of how the, let's say, just the events of the past year have affected us as a fiscal sponsor, because I think that it's relevant to this question, the issue that we're discussing today. So I would say that my recommendations are, one, I would love to see the board of BCYF include somebody who has experience in fiscal sponsorship. There were some issues that, to our understanding, were unique to fiscal sponsors. And I know that since the goal of the Youth Fund is really to give grassroots organizations who might not otherwise have access to the philanthropic sector that access, that's what fiscal sponsorship strives to do as well. And so I think it could be really valuable to have that perspective represented on the board as you're setting policy and setting up this new organization. And then the second thing is that BCYF funds are managed on a reimbursable basis. And that was actually quite challenging, as you'll hear in the letter. And it is a barrier for grassroots organizations. They have to basically pay out their whole, you know, cost of doing business upfront and then be reimbursed. Strong City facilitated that for the organizations that we fiscally sponsored. You can argue about how well we did that, but we do think that we added some value and made it possible for organizations who wouldn't have been able to front that whole cost themselves to keep going with uninterrupted programming. So just given your goals for the fund and for making it equitable, making it accessible to grassroots organizations, I understand that you have to balance those considerations between, you know, the need for very strong oversight of how the funds are used. But it just seems like those two goals are sort of in tension right now. So I was wondering, you know, if there was any room to look at different grant making strategies, like trust-based philanthropy, things like that, where the burden isn't put on the grassroots organization to fund everything upfront. That's honestly, I feel like I've already talked a long time, so I can just follow up and send the letter in electronically and just be done with it for now.
Thank you for your testimony and thanks for your work at Strong City.
Mr. Chair, the next person is Ms. Franco Mueller, or Franco Mueller, I don't know.
Oh, am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to play a part of tonight's discussion. My name is Franco Mueller-Pass. I've been teaching for 10 years and currently teach at Baltimore City College. I'm an advisor for two very student organizations, both of whom you'll hopefully hear from in a little bit, and they rely on outside funding. And I think it's deeply important to honor the knowledge of students. And the Youth Fund shows that our sitting, its leaderships, believe in this too. In order for students to be able to take advantage of the Youth Fund, however, in order to research community issues, to work together with their peers, to seek out resources, and ultimately to implement these dynamic ideas, they need fundamental technology and internet access. Without that, this incredible fund will fall victim to the digital divide that rocks our city and schools. According to the National Digital Inclusion Alliance, 22% of Baltimore households do not have broadband internet of any type. When mobile data plans are excluded, that number rises to 40.7%. By the second measure, Baltimore has the third highest rate of digitally disconnected households of any city with more than half a million restaurants, residents, behind only El Paso and Detroit. Despite the widespread suggestion to turn to the bare bones Comcast Internet Essentials program, and I can say as a teacher, we've been hearing and trying about this program a lot, our students and their families are often shut out of this program, and it is also deeply insufficient for their needs. Comcast will only provide one point of service to an address unless there are separate official apartments noted there, but we all know that many of our families live in unofficial multifamily dwellings. You also can qualify for this program if you're eligible for public assistance programs like the National Lunch Program, Housing Assistance Medicaid SNAP, and others. Yet many of our immigrant families can't access these programs, or if you're doing so due to the public charge rule, which harms an individual's chances of obtaining a visa, residence, or citizenship if they benefited from public programming. You're also eligible if you have no outstanding debt to Comcast, yet many of our families experience widespread debt, and this is only going to be waived, because it's waived momentarily until May 13th, which is quickly approaching. For our families who speak languages other than English, many struggle to speak to Comcast workers and to get their service connected, yet when surrogates such as myself, other teachers, social workers, and community members step up to help families and complete these calls to connect service, Comcast tells us we cannot, and they need to be speaking directly to the individuals starting the service. If the service miraculously reaches our students and families, it's not fast enough to sustain the needs that they have. With the 25 megabyte per second download speed and a 3 megabyte per second upload speed, how are student leaders supposed to take part in video calls and video lessons, upload information to one another, and for those that are doing school assignments, do assignment uploads? And to highlight the work of youth workers that are trying to do tech-based work, how are they going to be able to fulfill their responsibilities? To increase these speeds would cost Comcast nothing, and we must ask ourselves, why are cities at the whim of a company that doesn't believe low-income families deserve high-speed internet? If the Youth Fund is going to be successful, our city's youth need the internet access and quality that their leadership demands. To not address this problem, we'll relegate the Youth Fund to another compelling program that nevertheless ignores the blatant and destructive digital inequality that our city is facing.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you for teaching at City. Thank you for your great work with Somos. And, you know, thanks also for lifting up the digital divide and the need to make sure our young people have access to the internet. This is something that the council unanimously, through a resolution we just passed, fully agrees. I know that Mayor Young also believes strongly that closing the digital divide must be a priority in this moment. And so this is an active conversation about what role the Youth Fund can play in helping to get us there. Because to your point, if our young people don't have access to a digital device, if they are unable to get online, it is extremely difficult to learn right now in this moment. So again, thanks for your testimony and for all that you do.
For those who have testified, if you could hit the same hand, so that way you are now lowering your hand, that would help you a little bit. Thank you so much. And real quick, just because we had a person from City College, Mr. Chair, City Forever, the next person is Kimberly Vasquez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kimberly Vasquez, a junior at Baltimore City College High School and a member of Somos. For those of you who don't know, SOMOS stands for Students Organizing a Multicultural and Open Society. We tackle systemic injustices in Baltimore City Public Schools. I believe it is important for students to organize projects about their community, because they are the ones that will be immediately impacted by the decisions made in the Baltimore City Public School System. We know what needs to be improved in our schools. Having students take the lead is a great way to bring new ideas to the table about issues in our community, as well as the youth is the biggest component when it comes to the future of our city. If we allow the youth to be more involved in these issues, then our future teachers, mayors, and congressmen will be more prepared to deal with gaps in our system. For example, at SOMOS, one of our projects was starting the Patterson Park Inner School Cup, also known as PIC. The goal was to gather middle schoolers from around the city through soccer and expose them to what different high schools in Baltimore City offer them. We thought soccer was a great way to engage students and interest them in learning about the different options for high school. Before creating PIC, we did research on equitable ESOP representation in our school, Baltimore City College, and other highly selective schools like Poly, Dunbar, and Merveaux. In school year 2018, 2019, the ESOP population in district was 7.2%, but in the same year, only 0.2% of ESOP students were present at City College. We also noticed that many of our peers lacked knowledge when it came to the high school application process and based their decisions on the stereotypes of each school. If, I think if BCPSS is going to call our high school system a high school choice program, we should do a better job of displaying the different options. And so students may create an educated choice. This is the reason why we created PIC, a program that we knew would motivate students to learn about the high school options in a fun way. And our program does a great job inviting parents and students to know more about the different opportunities offered by different schools. Since the start of our program, we have seen an increase at Baltimore City College of recently exited ESOP students and ESOP students at our school. Without student research, ingenuity, and leadership, Baltimore City College might not have the diverse and multilingual student body that we have today. We need funds in order to proceed with this successful event, which impacts the entire Baltimore community in a good way. The more diversity we have in our schools, the more overall students will have an enriched school experience due to the exposure of different cultures and backgrounds. In the future, we would like to visit other schools in order to bring more awareness about this event and immigrant student issues. This is just one example of how students know what our community needs. This project was so successful that the second time around, the schools that participated the year before were actually asking us when the event would actually happen. Students are the ones exposed to the issue in the city, and we very much know how to unite our community and make sure that everyone is involved in the process of making our city better. We need students to make more projects like this one, and not only that, but make decisions on what projects should be funded and supported.
Kimberly, let me say first, thank you for your testimony. Second, thank you so much for your leadership. And I'm looking at my colleague and mentor, Councilwoman Clark over here, who's beaming. And just want you to know that we truly appreciate your work on PIC and your work to push city schools to make sure, when we talk about school choice, that it really is a choice for all of our immigrant students, for all of our students. And so, you know, from Councilwoman Clark and myself and all of the council here, again, thank you for continuously pushing this issue and improving the lives of not just yourself, but your peers as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just so you know, we have five people currently in the queue. The next person is Mr. Wesley Hawkins.
Am I unmuted? Hello?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, so hope everyone can hear me, and I hope everyone on the line is doing well. And there's uncertain times that we are going through this pandemic. So I would like to address first the Youth Fund, and I think is an awesome and great opportunity. And I, it helps organizations that are grassroots that normally historically wouldn't have the funding or the resources to be able to continue the work that they're doing. So as being a founder of the No Leader Project, which is a youth mentorship program here in Baltimore, and also one of the leadership members of Baltimore Institute for Educational Equity, a lot of our youth are being misrepresented. And a lot of the times, you don't have people who understand where they're coming from, what they've lived through, and what they're going through currently to be able to relate to them. So when you connect people to these individuals who don't understand what they're going through, sometimes you have low quality and low results. So by the Youth Fund being able to provide these smaller organizations those resources, I think that is great. So I would like to, you know, give my full support for that to continue to go on. Secondly, I would like, as far as right now, we have a lot of youth that don't have computers and technology. So the movement is using some of the funds of the Youth Fund. I support that as well, because right now I have 11 young youth in my program. And their parents have reached out and said, well, Mr. Hawkins, school has moved towards online learning. But I don't have either internet, or I don't have a tablet or a computer, or I have more than one child in my home. So if my son is on a computer, then how does my daughter learn, or how does my son learn? So I believe we should be able to look at these things and address the immediate need of the youth right now, because they are out of school and everything has moved to online learning. So how do we address that? We address that by trying to figure out where do we get resources to provide these things for these youth. So I want to applaud that initiative as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hawkins, and thanks for your work with the No Leader Project. And again, amen to the need to close the digital divide.
Mr. Chair, the next person is Ms. Kimberly Truheart.
Okay. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, good evening. I have been a strong supporter of the Youth Fund. And I am truly looking forward to this transition occurring. I am very concerned about the transition. And I am hopeful that the conversations that are being presented today are giving you enough info about what the community would like to see and some of the challenges that we've seen. And hopefully that we're going to make some adjustments where necessary. You know, one of my chief concerns is that this interim board was set up. And they, after or during the February hearing, talked about the fact that they had held two meetings. And I was very concerned in my public testimony that those two meetings that they held weren't publicly announced. I had not seen any minutes. And that led me to believe that possibly we were starting off on the wrong foot in terms of transparency. That truly bothers me. I have not had time to focus on whether those two meetings, the minutes were made public. I'm prayerful that they were. And that their third meeting would be announced beforehand, such that any members of the public who wanted to participate would be allowed to do that. The other thing is I want to second the testimony of Eva Wengren from Strong City, Baltimore. I am a board member of Strong City, Baltimore. And the challenges that a fiscal sponsor faces in helping support these grassroots organizations are significant challenges. And I agree that the methodology to disperse funds needs to accommodate the fact that these small grassroots organizations don't always have bank accounts that they can tap into. And that it is important that this revolutionary fund, as some folks want to call it, looks at advancing funding to cover some of the expenses. Reimbursement is fine. The city is amply protected when you have reimbursable programming. But that does very little to facilitate the activities that these small organizations need to take on. In terms of membership of this interim board of directors, if this entity is really going to stand up by July the 1st, we need to move swiftly to populate this new board with the breadth of people that we believe are important to this work. Young people, as Eva mentioned, somebody who has fiscal sponsorship experience. I think this is critical. The young people who have spoken today made some very valid points. And I think as the task force from several years ago brought up, we need to include youth voice. And I hope we are listening to them and will adjust the processes accordingly. In terms of immediacy and distribution of the funding, I'd like to hear if the second-year funding continuation funds were distributed. How many organizations got that funding? And what the balance is today and what is available to the Youth Fund? I'd also like to point out that around the country during this pandemic, we've seen very inventive ways to support our young people. And I believe Austin, Texas, sent 10 buses out into underserved neighborhoods to expand Wi-Fi accessibility. I don't know what that costs. And I'm torn as to whether those types of initiatives should come out of the Youth Fund or whether we can apply for federal funding. And I'd like to make sure that, where possible, we are absolutely applying for federal funding rather than using the Youth Fund. I think there are unique kinds of needs that the Youth Fund should be fulfilling. And the federal government has laid out, any unusual expenses related to COVID could get federal funding. I hope you're gonna have someone answer my question about funds availability and what has been expended since the first round. And come up with some insight into a timeline for moving forward. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate everybody who cares and loves our babies. I posted on my Facebook page yesterday that Liberty Wreckin Tech has distributed over 15,000 meals through our seven-day-a-week meals distribution program. And I'm thankful, I hope I can continue. It's all volunteers right now. But I'm looking for funding to help continue that process. 15,000 meals tells me definitely there's a lot of hungry people in my community. And we need to look across the city and make sure we're meeting the needs of the children. And that's what this Youth Fund is supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Truheart. I see Councilwoman Clark. Did you raise your hand, Councilwoman, to ask a question?
Wait a minute. I was, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, okay. No, I was just looking at the budget report that was submitted to the committee. And there was a small paragraph that rounds off numbers of how much has ever come in, how much has gone out, et cetera. And so if somebody that's actually physically in City Hall, well, actually, make sure you can get that to Kim Truheart. It's the big numbers, but at least it tells us something. And while I have the floor here, I would like to say that the money that's coming to the Board of Estimates from Fiscals 19 and 20, we have a commitment that all of that extra money that has not yet been awarded will be used for children and youth. It will be related to COVID-19. But hunger, the need for equipment, the need for electronics are all part of the COVID-19 experience here in Baltimore. So we have plenty of needs of children, youth, and their families that that money that's going there in Phil, and that's part of the legislation that you see at the very end. So that money's going to our children and youth. It doesn't say that clearly, but we have that assurance in this committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. And Ms. Diane Bell McCoy, are you still on the line? And could you speak briefly to Ms. Kim Truheart's questions?
I can. Thank you very much, Councilman. I want to speak to a couple of questions. One, the answer in terms of how many of the year-one grantees have gotten a continuation grant agreement and gotten their money. Kim, I'm trying to find it in front of me, although I'm on my laptop. It's actually approximately 40. Actually, we're through the distance and through the being the governor's order, we've still been moving forward and meeting virtually with the grantees and going through their proposals. They have a certain period of time to submit. So we now have 40 that have actually gotten it. 60 have actually gotten their year-two total application. And of those 60, 40 have actually completed their contract and gotten their money. And as I indicated, only a number of them are actually doing virtual activities. We have another, we have another 20 people will come in in those next 10 to 15 days in terms of they are in the process of completing their application. They were going back and forth in terms of working with the TA around our metrics. And we also have, and then another 20, we, all of those will be finished except for the we still have some challenges getting a final story. The other remaining, we're finishing their year-one finances where they were just our organizations, and it was a need to talk to their, need to talk to their actual CFO, for example. And I was thinking about a large one, I'm sorry. Heidi's let me know that. We actually have 38 that are totally approved, 25 have actually received money. And so the money we have will be different than what Mary pack is has in terms of the large information, the total money that's out the door to grantees for continuation. At this point, Kim, I believe, is approximately about 2.5 million. And then we only have, threw down about 5 million so that, because we were only in place through June. So that's all we have. And so as those grantees get their agreement signed, we move them the first half of their grant funding to them. And so it's not a reimbursable program. They actually get their money upfront, as you know. And so that's where we are with the numbers. And I can actually send that report to the council, Kim, and make sure it's available for you. But yeah, we're still, we actually have three, four signings this coming Friday. But yeah, we're still, we actually have three, four signings this coming Friday. Does that answer your question, Kim?
Can I just read this?
Yeah. Councilwoman.
That was very, I think that was very helpful. And when you put it together, when you put it together with what Ms. Bell McCoy has said. So here's what the Budget Committee said, the Budget people said. Since its establishment, the fund has been appropriated $37 million, $357,000 over three years. The current balance for the fund is, how much is left? Is $17,757 and $15. The first grants were awarded in August 2018 by Associated Black Charities, the Interim Fiscal Agency, to 84 organizations and totaled that money that went out then was 10.8 million. In spring 2020 now, these grantees were able to apply for continuation grants and dispersment of those funds begun, of those funds beginning now in April 2020. So we know how much came in. We know how much went out in two phases. And now Ms. Bell McCoy has told us the third phase that's going out, which is now for a continuation of some existing grants. And then all the money that's left at the end of this fiscal year in the fund goes to the Board of Estimates as supplementary. That's the last part of this law. And that's the part I was talking about, which it bothered me that it was going to the Board of Estimates. But then I learned that every penny of that money going there, the Board of Estimates, with the advice of the Transition Team and Ms. Bell McCoy and everybody else, will be spent entirely for children and families here in Baltimore City on issues related to this virus that's making our lives so fearful and difficult. So for tablets for the children, perhaps in the public school system, or meals if money runs out, like in the locations that Kim was talking about. But it would be for, it would be for children and youth. And it would be a public process that everybody could see. Thank you.
Councilwoman, again, thank you, Ms. Trueheart, for your testimony, for your work with Liberty and for always holding all of us accountable. Thanks also for lifting up that any money that does go toward COVID-related things, we really do expect that there be an attempt to have it be reimbursed. We know that there are supposed to be federal dollars going into Baltimore and other cities. And so it's a really good point to make sure that if we're talking about food, if we're talking about education, that, you know, we get compensated by the federal government to make sure our children have what they are, you know, what they are entitled to, which is access to an education and to food. With that, I'm going to turn it over back to Kalen.
All right, Mr. Chair. Next person is Denisha Hunter.
Hello, and my name is Denesta Hunt. I am the Executive Director, Child First Authority. We are the provider of after-school opportunities and we manage community schools across the city in 15 schools. And we were an initial grant recipient from the Children Youth Fund and very, very, very appreciative of those dollars. It allowed us to expand our middle school offerings to the point where we used to have just the smattering, to be quite honest, of middle schoolers who felt that they needed to come to after-school programming because someone in the household made them or told them to, or they had younger siblings who were involved in the programming and they felt they needed to be there in order for their younger siblings to participate. But as a result of being able to enhance and really build out a after-school program offerings that middle school students actually helped to co-create and design, we actually now have waiting lists of middle school students who are eager to participate in our programming. So I want to, first of all, thank the fund for allowing us to do something that we've been thinking about and trying to figure out how to do for a while. I do want to take this time to call out the support that we've gotten from a really, really strong technical assistance team, Mary Warren, Cheryl Goodman, and Child First specifically worked with Kieta Ariate Amin. They have been a really, really strong team. And with that, I get to my point. I noted in the legislation that it calls out that 5% of the fund would go to support public engagement activities and 15% of the fund could be used to support the actual administration of the fund. And I know that number has increased from 10% when the initial legislation was created. And I just really, really want to emphasize the importance of that latitude and making funds available for administrative support to ask 84 organizations of varying sizes, varying experiences, varying levels of infrastructure to be able to mount and be responsive to all of the reporting requirements and accountability. And I'm the first one to raise my hand to say accountability is important. But asking for the levels of accountability that are required for public dollars with the expectation to implement high-quality programming really, really presents a strain on organizations. And asking a small group of TA providers to provide what is really labor-intensive and a labor of love, I think, excuse me, needs to be called out. And allowing more, a larger percentage of the funds to go to support the administrative support that we provide to grantees, I think is really, really important and central. Because at the end of the day, we not just want to provide high-quality programming experiences for young people, the role of this fund is also to build the infrastructure of our small, community-based organizations so that they can grow, serve more children and families, but also be able to sustain themselves and to actually grow to scale. And the last point that I'll make, which others have made it as well, is about the transition. And we have, we've been asked to float our programming. For any, for some folks, four months, other organizations, six months without any funding. And that really, really presents a strain on organizations who don't have a cushion, who don't have a line of credit that they could draw upon, who don't have an individual, a deep individual donor base that they could draw on general operating support to float them until the Children Youth Fund dollars become available. So just waving a big, big, big white flag that as we move to transitioning to the new entity, I know that we are going to move with all due speed to get that done. And we also want to be strategic and do it well. But we really need to have that entity propped up and ready to go so that organizations do not have to either not provide programming or float programming when they really don't have those resources on hand until the monies can become available for what would then be the year three opportunity. So again, thank you for your time and for allowing me the chance to speak.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hunt, and thanks for your work at Child First. I wanted to take a moment to go back to Ms. Diane Bell McCoy, who wanted to add something as well.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cohen. I just wanted to make a clarifying point in terms of, and Denesta will help in her last comment. One, that several grantees on the line know this. The grantees are not, it's not a cost-reimbursable program that the way the city finance department worked it out so that the grantees could get their money in fact upfront. The challenge that some other grantees may experience from a strong city is if in fact we couldn't clear their fiscal clearance after the second quarter, we couldn't move the money forward. And so that, and a fiscal sponsor has the ability to, if they chose to do that, although we advise them, you've got to make sure we clear the fiscal hurdles, as you all know, to make sure that all the documentation is there. But as all the grantees can share, you that they got their money upfront. And so that's what made it easier for many of them to actually do the work. So that's one. But Denesta's point is different. And I think it is one we in the new entity are paying attention to because just as we had a lag time in terms of challenging around making sure that they have cleared all of their financial, fiscal information is a point I made in my testimony. In terms of, we cannot give that up in terms of the accountability for that. We think we have put some elements in place for this continuation set of grants is that we have actually have TA, CPAs, and financial accountants that are acting as TAs on the finance side for all grantees. And they're working hand-in-hand with that TA team, that grant team, that Denesta just described. And the goal of that is to make sure we don't have a lag in terms of the fiscal information, the documentation, and that we are using this, as I indicated to Councilwoman Clark, at my, we're using as a teaching process so that we are building, as everybody's indicate, infrastructure of the organizations that they're able to manage long past the youth funds, the funding. The other point I want to make in terms of that transition also that Ms. Hunt referenced in terms of year three, I don't know that the new entity has made a decision yet. I would say I just want to put a point there that all the grantees that are grantees now would necessarily get a third year funding. I don't, obviously, I won't be in the position of decision-making. The board and the new board would actually be in that position. But we're trying to make sure the transition from the first half of this year to the second half to the new entity, we're meeting, starting to meet regularly to make sure we are doing whatever we can do to make sure there's no lapse in the second half of the payment that grantees would get under this grant agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell McCoy. I know that Kira Ritter had wanted to say something as well. Kira, are you online?
I am. Ms. Diane Bell McCoy just spoke to the, to the topic that I wanted to, which is regarding accountability and this not being a reimbursement grant. This is actually the trust-based type of relationship that most progressive funders are moving toward, where grantees receive the first half upon contracting and then the second half upon meeting the requirements of the compliance requirements of the grant. So for some, it ultimately became a reimbursement grant because of the issues around not being able to complete the finance reports to standard. And again, to Ms. Bell McCoy's, Ms. Bell McCoy's point, we've brought in the finance TAs to help the grantees to provide that educational component, to get them through the process faster and to build their skill set.
Kira, Kalen, I'm going to go back to you.
Ms. Kirsten Allen.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, and good evening to everyone. Thank you to the Maryland City Council for the time and opportunity to speak. My name is Kirsten Allen. I am an interim board member of Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. Our board has been meeting in response to what has been proposed for the additional funds within the fund to be used for around investing in challenging challenges that the city is facing as a result of COVID-19. We are very aware of the challenges and aware that the city is focusing on an array of issues, but the one that has been presented to the board deals with an investment around food access across Baltimore. After lengthy conversations amongst us board members, we all agree that making that recommendation around the investment being discussed specifically around food access is imperative. But we also feel that it's equally important that it is done with the integrity and aligned with the original intention of the fund, which is to change the traditional grant-making paradigm in a way that empowers community. This board, this interim board would like to lift a recommendation that would respond to the needs of community and reinforce the true intention of the fund specifically around food access, not dismissing any of the other apparent needs, but that was the one that has been presented to the boards for the use of fund investment. And this solution funds an infrastructure that enables community to participate fully and actively in the future to inevitable needs. Funding should be invested in urban agriculture to allow for this. The Farm Alliance of Baltimore is the respected, incredible organization that should lead this charge. A three-phase plan has been developed by the alliance and will be shared in detail to the council based on a document that the interim board has put together and are happy to circulate. Just to reiterate, we are very much aware of the immediate need, but we are also committed to the sovereignty and sustainability of communities around Baltimore. So that's our response as it relates to the issue around food access across Baltimore as it was presented to this board last week.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
The next person is Ashira Valenzuela. Ashira?
Yes. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ashira Valenzuela. I am a student, a junior at Baltimore City College High School. And I'm here to talk about a program I've been working with since my freshman year called English-Spanish Intercambio, which is a program we pride on having students from our school and from Baltimore School of the Arts tutor native Spanish speakers and help them with their English. And this year, we actually began working with friends of Patterson Park, where we, but in also, in addition to teaching English, we teach Spanish. And so I would really like to focus on the fact that we've, throughout the years, we've blossomed with a lot of student leaders just with our program. And we do that by having an organization team come up with the materials that are needed for our participants and handing it over to our students to take control over. Because us as a, as a team, we don't know, each of the participants that come to our program don't have the same needs. A participant might want to work on their speaking skills or someone else might want to work on their grammar. And so we put the, we put the focus on the tutors who are part of the program. And we help, we ask them to figure out what is needed for them. And they tell us how we're going to provide it. And I just wanted to add, as an individual, since I've been doing this since my freshman year, how much inter cambio has affected me as a leader. Before I even began thinking about being a part of a program as amazing as this, I had no idea how to write a grant proposal. I've also never attended any grant workshops or been a, been a part of major phone calls with different leaders around the city and led different programs. And I just feel like the feeling is so exhilarating knowing that I as a person and I, as I work with other students, that we're making a change in our community and in the city. And so I think it's really important that we have youth lead many different ideas that you have like in the youth fund. So like, for example, I think it's really important that youth lead grant proposals because I've worked with many students who are committed to because I've worked with many students who, who are committed to this program and who have shown me that they want to continue learning and want to continue, continue helping the community. And in saying that, we um just like a little mention, our program is actually talking about hosting Intercom lessons online. And I've been working with many leaders, many student leaders on this plan to make it happen in maybe like a month or so. And that's really giving me a lot of insight that us young, uh, young teenagers are more than capable of handling many important leadership roles in our community and in the city. And I just think that giving us the opportunity to handle it on our own with the guidance of maybe a couple advisors, I think we're more than capable of surprising a lot of adults in this um environment and putting out a really good um impression. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Kira, thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you for your leadership uh with Intercomio. And again, to your point, uh, you know, I think there is a shared recognition that this work has to be guided by the voices of students. So thanks for lifting up uh your point about the need for young people themselves uh to Mr. Love's original point to really learn the skills of grant making, to really understand philanthropy at a high level, uh, and to be able to participate both as recipients of grant dollars, but also in their distribution. That's exactly what this youth fund seeks to do. So again, thank you for speaking to us tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kalen?
The next speaker is Olu. You muted yourself, Olu. unmute yourself, there you are. Olu, we, uh, if you could speak a little bit closer to your microphone.
Oh, I think I'm fine. And I need to take it off. Hello, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, so uh we use poetry to promote civic engagement. And in this time, the hard pivot um has been um something that we are on the front lines with. We believe that our programming, providing social, emotional, safe space and um and creative uh and space for creativity, this is a time for us to step up. And um, and we appreciate the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. I wanted to just bring up three um points as a fan of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund and more so as a community member. And as a, a community driven uh different kind of grant, I wanted to welcome, I'm not sure if there's been discussion about this before, I know that there's a board being formed, but the community, the organizations, the, the 83, and then there's, you know, more in the city that are, that are doing this kind of work. I would love for them to be a part of making decisions around the Baltimore Children and Youth and how it gets distributed. When those are people who I know are doing work and I trust them in, in a very deep and multi generational kind of way, um, a lot of the, the grantees. So I welcome some kind of formal way that those, that they become part of the decision making. I've had the opportunity to be a part of the recast grants um with B City. And I love that process where the uh, the fellow grantees or potential grantees chimed in to, to um present to each other and were a part of um in, in conjunction with a board and with staff, uh, were part of that decision making of, of, of who was granted. Um, so I would welcome some kind of um format like that. Um, also some look around the equity of, of the granting. There's some uh, like there's some people who were left out. I wasn't a part of the process, so this is just a very far outside observation. There were some people who were left out. There were some organizations who were given a fairly significant amount of money when they have never, you know, managed anything in that realm before, et cetera. And just like, what is the process? Um, so holding up, I know like, for example, Maryland State Arts Council is redefining how they are granting because in the past, there wasn't any kind of metrics or thought process around amounts and who was receiving, but some kind of um welcoming, some kind of um equity thinking even within the grantees that we have. Um, although I know the B, the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund itself is a, a, a kind of thinking around equity. And my last thing is um that the idea that was something that was said in the last hearing that I came to, that I've been sitting with, which is that the idea that this is a, an opportunity for people to experience philanthropy, um, what it's, you know, like to, to participate in receiving, you know, in the philanthropic um ecosystem and then move on when I feel like um there should, that is very appropriate that if there's those other two things in place, that there's equity and more community involvement, that people can continue to receive Baltimore Children and Youth funding for their program as opposed to saying, hey, that was great, you gave us two years, move along, find some other funding somewhere else. If they're doing good work, it's very appropriate that the, that there continues to be um resources allocated from the city. So those are my three points, thank you.
Thanks very much, Olu, and thanks for your work. Kalen?
Mr. Chair, this is everybody who has raised their hand. So I just want to um reiterate to every, everyone who is an attendee, if you would like to raise your hand, I'm placing on the screen now. Again, um, where you can raise your hand, so we'll leave for about 20 seconds, just so everybody can see. Um, for those who have called in on the teleconference, we are going to go to you uh right after. Um, what we'll do is we'll go down the line. There's no mechanism for those who teleconference in to raise their hand or indicate that they want to speak. So we'll uh go down the line. You'll hear two beeps, it'll sound like doot doot. And once you hear that, you will have the floor. Uh, just state your name uh and your comment if you have something to say. If not, please just simply say no comment. All right, let me see if anyone's raised their hand. Seeing Mr. Chair, I don't see any new hands raised, so we'll transition to the phone call. First caller, you hear two beeps, you have a floor.
No comment.
Thank you. Next caller, you have, you're here two beeps, you have a floor.
Oh, no, I didn't need it.
That was Mary Pat. Mr. Caller, yeah, what caller, do you have anything to say? All right, moving forward. Next caller, two beeps.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Mecca Mohammed. I just have one question um about the Children and Youth Fund. Will um trades for the youth be included in the fund? Um, what I'm hearing amongst the youth and the elders is that, you know, the bring the trade back to Baltimore City in construction and all different types of um areas such as uh cosmetology and um electricity HVAC and all types of different trades, but I'm finding that the youth are very interested, but they don't have a way to reach out or be able to have access to learning how to do a trade, which will some um allow them not to continue to get into trouble or as they say, I don't mind, it's the devil's workshop. And as the elder, um, as far as the elders, they, they're amongst talking to them, they were, are, they tell me that a good way to keep the children occupied is to have them learn some kind of trade so that way when they get older, they can open and have their own business, which will be equitable, uh, it could be equitable to Baltimore City and then that way they can um hire others and teach them how to do trades and then it, and it will start to build up generational wealth.
Thank you so much for your testimony and thanks for reminding us and lifting up the importance of the trades. Um, much appreciated.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, next caller, two beeps. All right. Next caller, you hear two beeps.
No comment.
Thank you. Next caller, you hear two beeps.
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Next caller, two beeps.
No comment.
All right. Next caller, two beeps. Okay, next caller.
No comment.
Mr. Chair, we've covered all of the individuals who uh have called in and I do not see any new hands raised.
Okay, um, thank Kalen. Just anyone else from the public that would like to testify? Seeing none. Um, again, thank you Kalen for facilitating that public testimony that was remarkably smooth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. There is one new uh hand which has been raised.
Great.
Ross, you have a floor.
Yes, yes, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Ross Trace Bureau. I direct an organization called African Youth Alchemy. And we were blessed to uh receive uh support through the BCYF to facilitate a program called Griot Works, which worked with youth ages 16 to 24. Um, and gave them media production, uh, training, entrepreneurship training, and then actually took them on a culmination trip to Ghana, West Africa for a cultural reclamation trip. My point is, um, first of all, I want to be very thankful to the BCYF grant because organizations such as ours, which um have traditionally not gotten support from some of the big funders for uh many years and doing work in Baltimore. Um, this grant has given, you know, especially organizations like ours, the opportunity to, to really implement a culturally relevant um curriculum and approach to development in Baltimore City, which I think is really important if we look at just the racial composition in the city and the fact that uh, you know, our educational leadership, I think could much strongly, much, much stronger be lifting up the aspirations and achievements of African American community and using that as a inspiration to really get the young people interested in, in their communities again, because uh a lot of the histories and the oral traditions of our communities are being lost. And I think that the young people can really be at a, a position of being in the forefront to help document, preserve those testimonies and then continue, uh, continue that tradition of the community service and particularly a culturally relevant approach. And so um, you know, my, my comments is really one of thanks uh to the BCYF because they have been able to support our organization in a way that we haven't been able traditionally to get that kind of support from uh big funders. And I just want to reiterate a comment I heard earlier, which is I think that um a lot of the solutions to the city's challenges do lay in fact with the youth and many of the organizations that have got some of this funding. And I think if we were to just create opportunities for organizations themselves to come together and to share their resources, to share the knowledge, to share the lessons learned, um, I think that would go a long way in helping each other. And uh the few times that that was done last year, I thought it was very um productive and very useful. And so um those are just some comments I would add for the future of, of the growing of the grant. So uh with those few words, I thank you.
Ross Trace, it's great to hear from you and thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Back to you, Kalen.
John Brothers.
Hey, this is John, I don't have anything to, to add.
Uh, Kalen, any further testimony?
Not that I can see, sir.
Great. Um, before heading to amendments, uh, committee members, any feedback responses that you want to share? Okay. I know that there are a series of amendments. Um, and I know that uh Councilmember Burnett has been uh in communication with the administration about uh proposing some of the amendments. Um, Councilman, are you set on those?
Mr. Chair, um, yes, I, I have, there are uh four amendments that have been proposed uh by the administration and all members of the committee have received this via email earlier today. Um, the, all of them are mainly technical and structural in nature. Um, the first amendment, uh, number one, uh, basically establishes um the, the length of time that the fiscal agent, I think they're coming up on the screen actually, there we go, I don't have to read all these, uh, will be in place. There we go, you can see it, okay. Um, the second amendment deals with the composition of the board itself. Um, and just want to spotlight that uh it also adds a requirement that there be um uh one third of the board be consists of youth, young people. Um, it's important. Um, the third amendment requires uh annual reporting out for the public to monitor and have oversight over the, the expenditures themselves. And the fourth uh deals with the enactment date of the fiscal agent. And if there are questions, yeah, I'll let the chair go, go to questions on this um before we move the amendment.
Uh, Councilwoman Clark?
Sorry, I um didn't get, I didn't see copies of the amendments, but let's get, can we go to the one um about one third of the board being young people? Um, which board? I can't. That amendment to, which amendment is that? I'm trying to look at the screen, but I don't have a way to move the, it up and down, so.
The Councilmember Clark, it's amendment number two and it's for the uh, the board of the new fiscal, the independent fiscal uh agent for the city.
What they call in the, they call in the um legislation, the Board of Directors?
Correct.
So that would be there. I, I'm sorry, but can I, I'm sorry, I haven't received it and so I need to read it if you give me a minute. Oh, they won't vote? Youth participation, oh, in this.
The reference to non-voting members are the city solicitors, designated, and the director of finance.
No, 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 I, no, we need voting members. I mean, we need voting members, we need it to be real for young people to be voting members of this Board of Directors. It, I mean.
The member there, the section about non, non, non-voting, I mean, if someone from the administration wants to jump in on this, um, I didn't write these amendments, so I don't know if Lester still on the call wants to speak to that.
Let, let me said, let me say this. Would you be willing to hold up that amendment until we have, we can always amend on second reader? If there's consensus in the committee.
Yeah, council member, I believe the youth are voting members.
Oh.
Yeah, uh council, this is Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. Permission to be recognized?
Uh go ahead, Mr. Stegman.
Okay, uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh so uh Councilwoman Clark, just to um to clarify, so in amendment two there, there are non-voting members of the board with it, there's two separate things going on. Uh non-voting members are from the city solicitor and the director of finance.
Okay.
And then a certain percentage of the board um that 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 shall be consisted of of youth and and those members are full members of the board.
Oh, okay. That's good. What about the transition board?
Uh the transition board is as per is is the membership provided in the bill.
Those are just names. I I don't know if they are youth or if they're elders or or what, you know, I don't know.
I don't believe so, but I would defer to uh I would defer to Devon if he's still on the call.
And Miss it, Ms. Allen was a name that I saw on the list of persons who are on that transitional board. Kirsten Allen, is she is she still around? Uh if not.
She's been unmuted. She's she's still here.
Yes, she's still on the call.
Oh, good. Can can we ask, are 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 youth represented on this transition board?
At the.
That came up through the program?
At the current moment, no.
Well, then, I would like to suggest, but I can certainly approve this one reds, this one amendment that that gives a third of the permanent board uh youth voting members. And I don't want to let this opportunity pass and somebody might have some second thoughts. But I would like to recommend to the chairman and the committee that this transition board is very important. I mean, I listened to Ms. Allen talk about a whole uh idea about uh support for food and farms and how youth could be involved with that and what that would mean. They're already, you know, they're already coming to some proposals uh for expenditure of some of the money, which God bless them for doing it. I would just like to make sure that their ranks included, young people and young can go, I think right now you can be young if you go up to twenty-four. Um but but I like to see people who, young people who were part of building this organization be added and made sure, even to that transition committee. So I'd like to talk about that be- before second reader uh with you, Mr. Chairman, and with the mayor's office, to see whether we shouldn't make sure of that for the transition committee. I love the resolution, voting members for uh the big, the committee that's going to be the permanent committee. Thank you. I'm prepared to vote for these amendments, but I'm looking for one more second reader if possible. Thank you.
And Councilwoman, would love to have that conversation with you as well. I think it's a point extremely well taken, and as you know, something that you and I have both uh lifted up a number of times throughout the youth fund process, just the importance of youth voice in every step of the way. So appreciate you raising the concern, and I think it is worth a conversation with the administration after the hearing uh as we think about second reader.
Uh I, if I may, while I'm still on microphone, um I want to make sure that people understand too that that money that the Board of Estimates is getting, that is money that was, is unspent as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And it's already been passed over from the end of fiscal year nineteen. That all goes, yes, to COVID-related issues affecting children and youth. And they, people should have input, young people from that organization should have input into what should youth and children need before all of us decide that for them. And that's just another, I just needed to make that on-the-record statement. Thanks. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Uh anyone else, questions on the amendments before uh Councilman Burnett calls them? Hearing none, uh is there a motion to move the amendments?
I think there's a motion to move.
Second. Okay.
Councilman Burnett moved the motion. Councilwoman Clark seconds. Uh Kalen, could you assist in this part of the process?
Jennifer Coats or um, roll call, girl.
Roll call, girl. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock? Councilman, uh? For the amendments, you gotta unmute.
Education Committee.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
And Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Five years, and the amendment passes. This is approved. Councilman Cohen?
Yes, ma'am. It, oh, I'm sorry, was I muted? Is is there a motion to move the bill?
I'd like to make a motion to move the bill as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Burnett and second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
And Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
The bill is approved. A motion is approved to move the bill on second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Coats. Uh thank you, members of the committee. Thank you to the public for testifying uh to the administration. Uh this bill will move to second reader and be heard in front of the council on the twenty-seventh. Um again, thank you to everyone for tuning in. Thank you for all the work that's gone into the Children and Youth Fund. And we look forward to continuing and carrying this work forward. And with that, this committee is adjourned. I do want to especially thank uh Kalen for manning and managing this committee. Uh really appreciate you keeping it flowing. I know that it is a challenge right now as we are all um in, you know, COVID mode. So again, appreciate your work and all the work of staff that went into this.
We are the challenge. Thank goodness for young people that will see us through. Amen.
Mr. Chair, and same uh same thanks to Ms. Jennifer Coats for doing the diligent work as well.
Absolutely. This committee is adjourned.